Good evening and welcome to the November 21st meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Bobby Phillips, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I would like everybody to hold our departed Sheriff Charles Cox and all of our police officers that service our societies across our nation in our hearts as we go to the Lord in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, please continue to wrap your arms around our world. We ask that you continue to heal the sick, give comfort to the infirm, and guide your followers to spread your word. We ask that you watch over all of the women and men who sacrifice their family time and lives in order to protect and serve in whatever capacity for the betterment of our society. We ask that those less fortunate find comfort and come to improve their situation in some manner through the generosity of others. Lay a calming hand over all deliberations in order for reason and common sense to prevail. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
All members are present.
Tonight, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 053-2016. Mrs. Knight, please read that ordinance.
Ordinance vacating an improved public alley running between West Main Street and West Water Street in the city of Troy, Ohio. This is adjacent to Miami County Safety Building, has been recommended by the Planning Commission.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the November 7th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, November 7, 2016. It was an executive session, following which council amended the agenda to include 054-2016. It was a committee meeting of the whole regarding ordinance number 054-2016. Committee reports: Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing an annexation agreement with Concord Township related to 1.8557 acres in Concord Township. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing purchase of fuel quantities in 2017 to 2019, also bidding asphalt materials and water meters for the same time period. Law and Ordinance Committee reported about receiving notice of liquor permit that had been in safekeeping for rapid-fired pizza on West Main Street. The Law and Ordinance Committee continued with a report regarding an ordinance and recommended majority recommendation that ordinance number 048-2016 be amended to establish the number of permitted retail dispensaries of medical marijuana to three throughout the city and that they be only in a B4 district. It was a minority recommendation that ordinance 048-2016 be enacted as recommended by the Planning Commission. There was a report of the Committee of the Whole that ordinance number 054-2016 on council's agenda be adopted. Resolution number R47-2016, purchase of gasoline, 2017 to 2019, first reading and adopted. Resolution R48, bid for certain supplies for 2017 to 2019, first reading and adopted. Resolution R49-2016, authorizing annexation agreement with Concord Township was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 048-2016 regarding medical marijuana was given third reading. There was a motion to amend the ordinance to limit the dispensaries to three within only the B4 district, which failed to be adopted. There was another amendment, another motion to amend ordinance number 48 to prohibit the retail dispensaries of medical marijuana from any district, as well as to prevent cultivators and processors, and that motion was adopted. Ordinance number 052-2016, release mortgage lien, first reading and adopted. Ordinance 053-2016, vacating an improved public alley, was given first reading. Ordinance number 054-2016, withdrawing a proposed tax levy from the ballot, was given first reading and adopted. There was a presentation by the Troy Recreation Association following various comments. Council adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move where you accept the minutes. Ms. Redd?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll begin our committee reports this evening with a report from the Personnel Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on November 15th regarding adjusting the starting wage for part-time and seasonal workers by five cents per hour to be consistent with the new Ohio minimum wage laws of $8.15 per hour effective January 1 of 2017. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending the rate for seasonal employees, temporary laborers, and temporary clerks to reflect a starting hourly wage for all new hires of $8.15 as of January 1, 2017 to comply with the Ohio minimum wage as required.
That in your committee is...who signed off on that?
That was signed off by Mr. Kendall, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair. The Personnel Committee.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you. Safety and Health Committee is next with the report from Chairwoman, Mrs. Oda.
Thank you, Madam President. The Safety and Health Committee met on November 15th to consider recommending approval of a revised police mutual aid agreement. Sixty-nine police agencies have been a party to the current police mutual aid agreement since 1993, with those agencies located within Montgomery, Miami, Green, Clark, Champaign, Preble, and Dart Counties. The agreement was recently revised to include Kalia requirements. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into the revised police mutual aid agreement. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Brock, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. The Streets and Sidewalks Committee has two reports this evening. Chairman, Mr. Phillips, will you present those, please?
Thank you, Madam President. The Streets and Sidewalks Committee met on November 15th to consider a professional services agreement with Wolfert Incorporated to perform a downtown parking and traffic study at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Part of the work has already been done based on the cost of $37,450. Providing the additional information requested related to traffic and parking would cost As a total work of the consultant will have a cost of $60,000, Council would need to authorize an agreement to cover the entire project. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with Wolfert Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for a downtown parking and traffic study. As the funds are included in the 2016 budget and to not delay the work of the consultant, we do support emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair of the Streets and Sidewalk Committee.
Are there any comments or questions from Council?
Madam President, just a clarification on the downtown. Is that...how many blocks is it? Two blocks out, or what's that included? What's included in that study?
The parameters of the study vary by the objective, but in general, it is two blocks in either direction, east-west, and one block north-south of the fountain.
Any other questions? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. Also on November 15th, the committee met to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that a 10-foot alley located off of Cherry Street, south of West Main Street, be vacated as it serves no public purpose. All abutting property owners have signed a petition requesting the vacation of this alley. It is the recommendation of the committee, and we do support the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and recommend that legislation be prepared to vacate the 10-foot alley located off of Cherry Street, south of West Main Street, adjacent to in-lots 289, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, and 287, as petitioned by all abutting property owners. Again, this is submitted by Councilman Heath, Councilwoman Snee, and myself as Chair of the Streets and Sidewalk Committee.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Our final report this evening is from the Utilities Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 15th, the Utilities Committee met to consider recommending a professional services agreement with RA Consultants LLC to perform the West Milton Water Regionalization Study Phase II at a cost not to exceed $75,000. The second phase of the study will provide the city with further data needed to make a decision related to the West Milton system. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a contract with RA Consultants LLC of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the West Milton Water Regionalization Study Phase II at a price not to exceed $75,000. As this is a 2016 appropriated project and funds are available, the committee supports emergency legislation so that the agreement can be encumbered from the 2016 appropriation. And this is respectfully submitted by John Twilliger, William Twist, and myself as Chair.
Any comments or questions from Council members?
Yes, Madam President, I have a question. We did a study with the county with RA Consultants, did we not? And was Milton been a part of that study?
Yes, they were. That was Phase One. This is a lot more detail, where we're narrowing it down to West Milton as a logical starting point and isolating their system in particular. So this is the next step. This isn't redundant. This is the next step. And RA did do the first step, so that provides us with some economies of scale that allows them to do the next step.
What would be different now as opposed to what the...I guess, was it a broader study?
Yes, it was a broader study that looked overall at the rate sensitivity. It isolated all of the operating and capital and debt service costs of the entire system. It made some assumptions of growth, of impact, of the age of the infrastructure, of, you know, scheduling of replacements and renovations, and from that point, gave us an assessment of where we were at, where we could go, what kind of cost benefit there was. And so that was Phase One. And now Phase Two dives into it in a lot more detail, again, specific to the West Milton system with regards to legal boundaries, getting into some of the potential responsibilities and the impacts of those responsibilities, and really, you know, gets into the finer points.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing Council.
Council, Amy Shannon, 1560 Windridge Place, Apartment D, Troy, Ohio. Here I am again. I came with a prepared statement that was going to discuss some of my concerns with misinformation, things that I've heard that have not been entirely what I know to be accurate. And I've decided that that's not going to be worth the argument at this point in time. So what I'm here to say again is, this is...medical marijuana is a medication. This is not about a drug. This is not about something that we want to abuse. There is no difference between a medical marijuana dispensary and the CVS pharmacy, other than you're likely to have more safety at a dispensary because they're only there to dispense the medical marijuana. It's not people coming in to buy diapers that go into the bathroom to overdose. There is no ability to overdose on marijuana. There's no ability for it to cause more harm than what we're already seeing in our community from prescribed medications. And this is a medication that can truly make a difference for people. Currently, there's 21 conditions that have been approved by the state, from epilepsy, Tourette's Syndrome, pain conditions, Parkinson's, muscular MS. These are conditions that are very, very hard to treat, and we need another option. And I'm asking you not to take that option away from us in this locale. There's been concerns raised. I can argue all of them. But what I can tell you is there is not a valid reason to not have this option within Troy. I understand the concern that we don't know what the state's going to do yet, in which case then let's wait until we know what the state's going to do. But we should not be cutting off our nose to spite our face and say that we're not going to offer this and leave the hundreds, if not thousands, of people in this community without. I have people that came with me today that either they or their children or their family members need this, and I'm asking you to please not ban dispensaries within Troy. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has any comments at this time?
Dr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I've got a couple of concerns here. One is, we seem to be spending a lot of money on consultants, and that's taxpayers' money. And for this traffic thing, even if we paid somebody $15 an hour for a week, that'd only be $840, and it would take a long time to reach $60,000. So I'm thinking, you know, we could either put one of them strips across there like we see in roads and get the count of cars coming and going, or we could have somebody stand down there that works for the city or hired by the city to count them with a clicker. I mean, it's going to be a lot cheaper than $60,000 for a consultant. So that's one concern. The other concern is, I am for medical marijuana. I'm not for recreational marijuana. There's a lot of people out there with pains that we do not even understand, and I think it only behooves the city of Troy to have compassion for those people and allow medical marijuana in the city of Troy. I know that those people that use medical marijuana, if they're caught driving under the influence of that, they will be prosecuted, and that they have to understand that. I understand it. They have to understand it. So it's a two-bladed sword, but it's going to be beneficial to the citizens of Troy that need that relief. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I noticed, again, we said holiday tree. I don't care what you call it. You could call it anything you want, but for me and a lot of other people and kids, it's a Christmas tree. A good old Christmas tree, not a hack...you know, a holiday tree. I don't know...I guess we have to be politically correct and say holiday tree. Why? I have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address Council? Move on then to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R50-2016.
Resolution number R50-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a police mutual aid agreement. This agreement, which has been in existence since at least 1993, has been updated to include Kalia standards, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R51-2016.
Resolution number R51-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with RA Consultants LLC of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the West Milton Water Regionalization Study Phase II and declaring an emergency. Cost not to exceed $75,000, first reading.
Are there any comments from Council?
I move for suspending the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R52-2016.
Resolution number R52-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Wolfert Inc. of Dayton, Ohio, for a downtown parking and traffic study and analysis and declaring an emergency. Cost not to exceed $60,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R52-2016.
Resolution number R52-2016, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Wolfert Inc. of Dayton, Ohio, for a downtown parking and traffic study and analysis and declaring an emergency. Cost not to exceed $60,000, first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on then.
Resolution number 048-2016, an amended ordinance enacting Section 1149.13 of the zoning code of the city of Troy, Ohio, related to retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana within the city of Troy, Ohio. This is based on the amendment at the last council meeting where prohibited would be the dispensing, cultivating, and processing of medical marijuana. This is the fourth reading.
Are there any questions or discussion from Council?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Heath?
And just to clarify, we are not voting or prohibiting anything tonight allowing someone to use it that's been able to use that within city limits. If they're able to use it, if they've been prescribed or suggested, they can still use it within the city limits. We are only voting on whether we are allowing medical marijuana dispensaries, marijuana shops within city limits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
It also is the vote to allow either cultivators or processors to...correct?
To prohibit.
To prohibit.
Right.
It's like an across-the-board prohibition.
Right. But this is also to prohibit medical marijuana within the city limits.
The dispensary.
The dispensing.
Dispensaries. Someone is able to go to a city locally that may pass this in the future, buy their products, come back to Troy and use it within city limits.
Right.
We're just banning the dispensaries, cultivators, and processors?
Correct.
People can still use it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Move for suspension.
This is the fourth reading on this.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by...I'm having a name trouble. Seconded by Mr. Heath.
And, Madam President, may I? Just since his plan, this ordinance differs from the Planning Commission, it requires an affirmative vote of seven members for it to pass.
Correct. Yes. Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
No.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The ordinance fails adoption.
Okay, I ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordinance 053-2016.
Ordinance number 053-2016, ordinance vacating an improved public alley running between West Main Street and West Water Street in the city of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It is adjacent to the county building, and this is the second reading, but a committee has not yet met.
Right, so this will go to another reading. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 053-2016.
Ordinance number 055-2016, ordinance vacating an improved public alley located off South Cherry Street, south of West Main Street in the city of Troy, Ohio. This has also been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. All abutting property owners signed a petition requesting the vacation, first reading.
A point of clarification for myself. Will this also require a public hearing?
No, ma'am.
No.
Because all abutting property owners did sign.
Did sign it, okay. All right. Any questions from Council members?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved...
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance, I'm sorry. Yeah, O-56, 2016.
Ordinance Number O-56, 2016. Ordinance repealing Ordinance Number O-32, 2014, and establishing salaries of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This amends the salary ordinance for hourly, temporary labors, part-time labors, to comply with the state minimum wage law at the beginning step. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from Council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
No.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance, I'm sorry. Yeah, O-56, 2016.